New testimony. Lane County and Springfield, actually, Lane County last week went ahead and approved a similar motion to this to allow new testimony, and Springfield will be bringing it up at their meeting next week as well. And staff definitely support allowing new testimony and evidence at this political area.
Thank you very much for that. George, you want to put the motion on the table?
Sure. In accordance with Eugene Code 9.7750, subarticle one, I move that by March 13th, public hearing of the joint elected officials regarding the boundary changes of the metro plan, allow new testimony and not be limited to the record of the planning commissions.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Councilor Zelenka is not going to be with us, he's out of town this evening. So, the next item on our agenda are committee reports, and I'm just, don't feel compelled, but if you've got something that you either want to talk about in terms of a committee or just report in general, I'll go around the table, and then we'll head on into the main issue of the evening. So, I'll start with...
I'll pass, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I do want to talk about El Rapa a little bit, because it's part, one of the committees, and also the PSCC, and I don't really have anything, the youth committee, juvenile committee, you know, things are bad for the county, I really can't expand on much more than that, they're concerned about their funding. But El Rapa's clipping right along, and I've actually asked city manager if perhaps we could get a work session on how El Rapa and all our other joint committees that were in partnership with Lane County and Springfield, the funding issue, you know, here we come again, you know, I've heard from both Springfield and Lane County that there's no money for them to pay their part of the dues, and so I think we really need to talk about it as a council before we get to budget time. We are getting in our budget season at El Rapa, starting in March. I just appointed Tom Musclewhite from my neighborhood to be the Eugene representative on that budget committee, I think it'll be a good mix. El Rapa has had quite a bit of success with the home wood heating and wood stove change-up programs in Oak Ridge and Cottage Grove. Saul Marcos has done a wonderful job with that. The staff plans to host a week-long motor vehicle testing project in Eugene as part of Earth Month in April. Six auto shops are lined up to participate, so I think that'll be good. The staff sent out 11 informational packages in January to Lane County residents who receive building permits for remodeling projects around asbestos, because that seems to be a lot of our, people who are not compliant is, people who are working on their house or their apartments are doing renovating, and they don't realize that there's asbestos there until after the fact. So, the goal is to really get that information to people when they apply for their building permits, and in that way it kind of saves them from having to get in trouble. So, that's about it. We do have two subcommittees from the El Rapa Board, we have a revenue resource committee, and they're talking about different things, just trying, how are we going to function, because for every dollar that the city doesn't participate in, they lose money from the feds because it's a matching dollar thing, so I think we really do need to have a discussion about that. And then there's the personnel policy committee, which we haven't met. So, that's about it, Mayor.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I will quickly just give an update on the Housing Policy Board. We have had two special meetings to talk about the impact of the federal funding on both the home funds and the CDBG money. The home funds have traditionally been one of the primary sources used to fund low-income housing projects, and so there's some significant projected cuts in both of those in the CDBG funds. Not only will that affect the ability to help underwrite low-income housing projects, but a portion of that money is allowed to be used to allocate for operations and for administration, and so that would actually have an impact on the FTE available in that area. So, that's a part of the conversation, is how a reduction in home funds would roll through the city's budget and affect staffing, which is more than just paying for low-income energy or low-income housing projects, it staffs a variety of different kinds of activities, and so that could be a kind of a challenge. Also in the meeting, we talked about the coordination between the different jurisdictions and how they use their money. Eugene primarily uses a lot of its funding to pay for multifamily low-income housing projects, whereas Springfield uses a lot of its money to help underwrite the cost for people to get into housing, into homes. And so, it's actually a nice complement to each other, and the programs work very well. I was very impressed at how the staffs from both Springfield, Lane County, and Eugene actually do coordinate really well on their projects. And then, the last thing I wanted to talk about is that the work that the Housing Policy Board is doing right now does have a relationship to Envision Eugene, and the work that's being done around the housing mix and the inventory, and so they're very interested in what ultimately this group will come up with, because that will have an impact on proposals around housing, housing mix, low-income housing and funding. So, I think the information we share with the council is really helpful, and the information that the council shares with the Housing Policy Board is also really interesting. So, right now, it's actually working pretty well in terms of the relationship. So, we're going to do a debrief next week on the last RFP, which was the Baskin Village, and talk about how that went, what could be done to make it better, how we could facilitate that. I think we really only have one land bank site left, so we really want to make sure that as we begin to move that project, it gets better each time we do it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Eddie?
Thanks. The Workforce Partnership Board has received a grant from AARP, American Association of Retired Persons, I think it is, to help find employment for older people who want jobs. And by older, that means past 50, so some of you qualify. Thank you, that's all.
We're a lot of older people.
I just quit a job, I got tired of working. Thursday, the 16th, at 6:00 at the North Park Community Church on Harlow Road, the Harlow Neighborhood Association is having its meeting. I was previously committed to another engagement, so I won't be there, but for the folks watching that are in the Harlow Neighborhood Association, we usually have a pretty good turnout, 30, 40 people, it's a very active neighborhood. And then last month, I attended the first, I think it's the first meeting of the newly-formed Northeast Neighbors, Neighborhood Association, and they gave a presentation on the pedestrian-bicycle program, and gave a presentation on the, kind of a, how the Baskin Village process went, and it was pretty good turnout for one of their first meetings also. And with that, I'll just go ahead and pass.
Mike?
Pass, Mayor, thank you.
George?
It's, I'm, to give a brief rundown on doings at the Metropolitan Waste Water Management Commission, we, last meeting on Friday, we reviewed the projects that were completed last year, and most of them, not all, but most of them came in well under budget, and partly that was because of, you know, favorable bidding environment, very competitive bidding environment on both labor and materials, so they were able to complete these projects and carry over a fair amount of money into this year's budget. And then we had a preview of this year's budget, and we'll be asked to, we, the council, will be asked to approve that in May, and, let's see, what else? The, I told you earlier about the contract that we were entering into with the freshwater trust for repairing, repair, and in order to get shading credits for lowering the temperatures of the affluent into the river. That's run into a little bit of a snag, they thought everything was pretty much going down the smooth path, and then the Federal DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, has decided that the grant money that the Clean Water State Revolving Fund would have provided for this project can only be used, you can only count as a capital cost the actual work that's done on the ground, and you cannot add into that the 20 years monitoring that they'll be doing on the project. So, that's gone a little bit of a delay into the project, they need to find out how to fund that, the second part of it, just besides the actual planting of the trees. The agreements with the landowners and all that will not fall under the capital costs, so they're going to have to figure out how to pay for all of that, and they will, they're very clever over there, and they'll think of something. So, I just wanted to add that. I had meant to get an update on the request for proposals for the harvest of the Poplar Farm, but I was waiting till the end of the meeting, but then I had to run over here to make the meeting at 9:00 for our council workshop, so I didn't get to ask that question, I'll update you next time. I guess that's about it. The only other thing was, December was one of the lowest rainfalls recorded in our history, except for the last few days. The last three days, we got four and a half inches of rain, and all of that, you know, plays into how the waste water management plant can operate, and they do a great job of programming all of the equipment, and they handled, the peak flow was 158 million gallons a day on Friday, the 30th, and the plant performed beautifully, met all regulatory requirements, and had a capacity of about 20 more million gallons that they didn't use, so they run a pretty good operation over there.
Great.
Thanks.
You, manager?
I'll pass, Mayor, thanks.
So, I'll just wind this up by saying, when we do talk about El Rapa, let's be sure we talk about what's happening to DEQ at the state level at the same time, because if you're going to rely on, talk about relying on one instead of the other, you need sort of reality check on what's happening with that at the same time. And then my other comment was, I did hear a high interest actually on whether any of our land, I guess we only got one piece of property, but whether we could be using that like other properties for gardens when they're not being in production, so just...
Is that our last piece of property?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I would find out.
I did want to call your attention, you got it in your packet from the, since, I'll just channel Councilor Zelenka here, and the, there's a thing from, we got from the Sustainability Commission on the pedestrian bicycle master plan, and when you look at that, the things they are asking us to pay attention to, in addition to what's already in the plan, is more data collection on non-motorized trip collection, prioritization, how we clear criteria for prioritizing products, projects, as well as an annual update process, I think this is just about accountability, knowing how we're moving. And then they, the big thing in their recommendation is that Eugene needs a dedicated source of funding to build those projects, and so they ask, or suggest, that if another street repair bond measure goes before the voters, they recommend it includes dedicated funding for biking infrastructure and sidewalk construction at the same time, so something for you to think about when that comes along, and reinstitute and fund a sidewalk infill program. This is all sort of part of the complete streets discussion, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. Okay, with that, we will move out of this particular part and go on to our main item of the work session, which is the West Eugene MX Extension Update, and Rick Duncan should be really proud of me, because I've got him teed up here really early. He has a spaghetti dinner date with his granddaughter, and we just want to, you know, help out where we can.
And I'll do my part by being very brief. It was about 11 months ago tonight that the city council and the Lane Transit District Board took 50 some odd alternative ways of getting MX out to West Eugene and narrowing it down to a single locally-preferred alternative. During those 11 months that have happened, since then, LTD staff has been very busy refining that proposal and studying what the effects may be. Tonight, LTD and their consultant team are here to present some of their findings. Tonight, there are no decisions being requested of you, it's a chance to, for all of us, to hear, learn, discuss, and your staff will be in the back taking notes. I'd like to introduce, it's my pleasure to introduce Ron Kilcoyne, the General Manager of Lane Transit District.
Welcome. Can I see the picture in the paper?
Thank you. I learned something in that article, I never realized I used the word gee whiz, but I guess I do. It's in the paper, must be true. Good evening, Mayor.
Remember on TV.
Okay.
Just want to let you know.
So, don't say anything more than gee whiz.
I won't say anything more than gee whiz.
Gee whillikers.
Anyway, good evening, Mayor, City Council. As you know, I came here about six months ago, and the small starts process, or the federal process for planning projects like MX, was new to me, I need to learn how the process worked. And sometimes dealing with federal government does work in mysterious ways, and it's how timing goes. We submitted our draft environmental analysis to the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, in the end of September, and for the last several months, they have been reviewing it. And what you will hear tonight from Rick Duncan is, will be added or incorporated into that environmental analysis. And we should, we should get word from the FTA, I'm guessing sometime in March, if they will certify that environmental analysis, in which case, that will kick off a 45-day public comment period. And then, once the comments are received and evaluated by the FTA, then they will issue what's called a Fonzie, a finding of no significant impact. That's a critical piece, because we need to get to that point in the project, otherwise, if we don't get to that part, we would have to return the funds that the FTA gave us to do this planning up to this point, and we obviously don't want to do that. So, Rick Duncan will talk about the real estate analysis, looking at the impacts on takings and parking and what have you that will be incorporated in the environmental analysis. I say that things work in kind of mysterious ways, because even though they have not approved the environmental analysis yet, the, we also needed to submit the small starts application, and in today's, in the budget, the president's budget that was released today, there is $19 million recommended to begin working on the project development on this, so presumably if the project dies, we won't get the money, and also the way things are going in Washington will probably still be, probably still not have a budget a year from now, but nonetheless, we did find that out. So, I will turn it over to Rick Duncan, but I would also like to point out that we do, on this Thursday, if we can make a quick shameless plug here, Thursday, February 16th, is the Connecting Communities Workshop. Between 7:30 and 9:30, we have two national speakers, John Robert Smith and Christopher Leinberger, and it's free at the Hilton. If you haven't signed up, you could probably email RSVP@LTD.org to sign up. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Rick.
Thank you, and I've talked to the mayor, and I'm willing to take questions through my presentation, if you have any. We're going to try to cover quite a bit of technical area, since this is a technical report, and I'm going to be out of here in about three minutes, so do you have any questions? This has actually been a very interesting project for us, as most of you know, I've been around here doing something like this for a long time, and plus, my work in the Envision Eugene process has really helped me, I think, to understand this corridor, and also the work I've done with the West Eugene Collaborative a few years ago, was very much involved in this. Can everybody see these? Thank you. Just to remind you of what the locally-preferred alternative was, this map shows you the connection from the downtown Eugene station on through West 6th, out to West 11th, to the terminus out at Commerce Street, and then back in and up to West 7th, and so on. And during this process, I'm going to sort of give you an idea of what we took a look at, we took a look at several items that we referred to as potential impacts, and I'll give you a summary near the end, but again, ask questions. These first couple of three slides to sort of show you where our impact areas are, the impact areas are the areas you see in blue, that's areas where there may be some actual property acquisition at this time. Realize that at this point, the design is at approximately the 8% level, which means that we're working off of such things as ARIOs, county tax maps, and sort of general ideas of where some of the acquisition areas will be. So, as this gets defined, we'll move into an appraisal process, but that's going to be a ways down the road. So, what we've done today is not appraising any property yet, we haven't dealt with the actual dollars and cents to an individual property, but more the aggregate for budget purposes. This is the West 6th, 7th portion of the east end, you'll note the reason for the names there is to simply give you an idea of where we are on the map, they by no means mean anything as far as the type of property that was impacted or anything else, just again, to sort of give you a visual is where we're going. The second one moves on to the western segment, which will then make its southerly turn onto Garfield, which is at the very far end of this particular map down through here. Again, you can see the areas in blue are the solid lines where there would be some acquisition, the areas in green will be the travel lanes that'll be shared by both MX cars and so on, as it moves through the system. This is the Garfield area, again, you can see, and once again, the names there, just to give you an idea of where we are on the maps and where we're moving to, this is mainly the south, excuse me, the north-south area between 6th and West 11th, where the service will then move west. Yeah?
Hi, Rick. Could you, those blue lines on the last slide, just for some idea of scale, they look like they're about the length of a car, approximately eight to 10 feet, is that lighter blue?
To give you an example, would you point up at the adult store? Because I happen to have this question asked me, so I know this one pretty well. That one in there is still an example, on the northern portion of the property, it's about seven feet in width, and it expands down to its southern, which is right along in there, it'll be about 16 feet in width at that point in time. And then the next building you'll see, the large one there, is the Authentic Models Building, and that narrows back down to its southern end, where it's about three feet wide, if I remember exactly. If you want to know the dimensions, we actually have all our data sheets with us, if you want to get that far down into this, we'd be glad to tell you that.
Well, sometimes I may want to do that, but I think for today's purposes, I just kind of want to give a general idea, because it's, just to get an idea of the scale of those blue lines.
And actually, as I go through this, you'll note that the actual width, not the length, but the width in most of these is a matter of a very few feet, we really don't have many. This particular is probably one of the wider areas where there's the acquisition, and it has to do with the way the bus is going to run down through there, or the vehicle. Again, heading out West 11th, this is Garfield, the West 11th, which would be the east end of West 11th versus the west end. Again, you'll see down on the lower portion there, where the Applebee's Restaurant, where there would be some acquisition area there, I'll talk about that in a couple of minutes. Again, moving out further, you can see that there will be some areas where it says Carl's Jr. and so on, to give you an orientation, that's where the Lowe's is, and if you'll remember, there's a sort of an inclined slope there that slopes up to their, up to the Lowe's property. I'll talk about that a little bit later on in one of our mitigations, recommendations to LTD. And again, this moves on further west, for some of you who've been around, as an example, this area, part of this area used to be known as the Route F, for those of you who've been around, I'm going to show that is on the northern portion. It's Route F. Route F used to be the route going to Florence, I assume that's where the F came from, but I don't know that.
It was the postal route.
Ah, there we go. Somebody's been here longer than I. That actually, the area you see up there on the north side of the right-of-way is actually current right-of-way, so that portion is not owned by the property owners, in fact, their property lines start approximately where the asphalt is back up in front of the buildings up in there. And we find this along both West 11th and to a certain extent on West 7th, there's actually some right-of-way along there that's being utilized by property owners currently that is actually already owned right-of-way. And this takes you out to the end, out by Target, where the last station will be planned, up above where it says Jack in the Box, up on the north edge, that's where it'll make its turn, come back out onto West 11th, and then return to the downtown station. So, our scope of work, again, what the idea here was, is that we weren't asked necessarily just to value the land, which is a later step, we were asked to not only give them an idea of what the budgeting would be for the amount of acquisition, but also to take a look at other issues that came along. And so, with that, first, we started off looking at the general description, and as appraiser, one of the things that we look for, for future reference, is what we refer to as a larger parcel, if these properties do end up in some type of domain process, part of the larger parcel is actually the contiguous ownership of land and what that may mean from a highest damage you stand, and so on and so forth. So, we wanted to make sure that we really understood sort of what I'll refer to as the parent piece in any area where there may be some acquisition. Again, reviewing the acquisition maps, these maps, as I mentioned earlier, were really just aerial photos that were available, they had tax lot maps on them, and then they had a general outline of where the acquisition area is going to be. To give you an idea, the lines on some of the maps were two to three feet wide, and although a property take will be a finite line, that's sort of the work we have, and that's what I mean, at this point, there's been no survey or no actual engineering on these things, so we're working with sort of the best guesstimates on where this is going to go, although I will tell you that through this process, once this goes forward and is approved by FTA, those areas cannot be expanded, is my understanding. And again, that's, LTD can tell you more about that. Part of our also work, being that I have some understanding of our land use code and so on in this community, was to also deal with some of the land use issues that may affect properties, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. We were trying to understand, are we going to cause problems for property owners with regard to issues that may occur because of these acquisition areas, and again, I'll mention that in a moment. The other thing was to try to deal with the impacts on the variety of properties and businesses, and we'll talk about those further, but that was really to try to come up with, are there other impacts that may not have been realized as LTD went through its original designs? And a lot of that comes from the amount of work that our company's done over the years on a variety of right-of-way projects. Give you an example of one we worked on a few years ago that dealt with something similar to this, as far as quite a bit of property taking, was the expansion of Walports, 101 through Walport, if you've been down there, it's, they've completely reconstructed that whole road down through there, we actually did all of that acquisition work for that, those takes. And then the big one for us was to really deal with mitigation as much as possible, and try to come up with strategies on different properties, and we went back to some of the things we'd seen over the years, to be able to try to minimize a lot of the property effects that may have occurred through the original design, and wherever possible, either change that or mitigate it to a point where it really reduced the amount of impacts for the property owners. The first one, and these are the most impacted properties that we ran into in our analysis, the first one is the adult store on Garfield, which is the corner of Garfield and West 7th Place, not West 7th. So, we indicated, this, one of the things here was, is that the actual acquisition here, as you can see down on the bottom left, is the right-of-way lane there, and then what you see is the hash mark is actually the area to be acquired, which will be a sidewalk and so on. One of the things that we did here is to take a look at, is the travel lane for the on-property travel between the sidewalk and the building is so minimized that it actually can't accommodate a vehicle correctly. So, one of the things we did there was, in this property, was to take a look at what it would take to remove that hindrance to the property, and what we've recommended is, one, there's likely to be those awnings removed that you'll see on the west, excuse me, on the east side of the building, and then the face of that building will likely have to be modified and reduced back to allow adequate travel through there. The reason, this is one of the buildings that is possibly going to require a full acquisition. It could be modified, it'll be up to really how LTD and the property owner agree what needs to be done, the property owner may decide that the modifications work while they're there, they may also decide that there's enough modifications to the building that we will be able, or that they'll have to have the building, they'll have to relocate and then have the building reconstructed at a later date or removed. Again, from our standpoint, all of the work we've done has either been from the right-of-ways using public records and so on, so we have not entered any of these buildings as of this date, so we really don't know what the structural components are of the building to be able to talk about that at this point, and that would actually be up to an engineer to deal with it. An example, which I'll talk about again a little bit later, on the very north edge of this, the original plan, if you'll notice, has the sidewalk curving around to the north, that's actually right where one of their ingress egress points are, we recommended that that actually does not occur to allow that access point to be, remain open, so that they can at least have drive-through from the north to the south, there is another driveway on the south down near the next property over, which is Authentic Models. The other thing we had here, which is down at the bottom, that we have to deal with, is we do have some billboards that will have to be relocated and moved, because they have to be out of the right-of-way, they are not allowed to overhang the public right-of-way, so that would be a removal there. The other property of the two that really were, had the most impacts is... The other property of the two that really were, had the most impacts is the Age, King's Asian Market on West Eleventh. As you can see on the bottom photograph, the sidewalk area actually reduces that parking movement area by about another four feet. We actually worked with Jim Hanks, who's a traffic engineer. I think most of you probably know Jim here locally. He helped us with a lot of these types of things. We actually physically went out, looked at these along with many other ones that have other issues to try to determine what we could do with these parking lots. This one is the most problematic because it actually, once the acquisition area is removed, the parking becomes very problematic to try to move through. The access points now are approximately where those arrows are on the, on the upper area. And then you can see a car actually leaving the lot down there. That's the other one. The traffic flow becomes very challenging through there, even trying to do diagonal park and whatever. So it becomes a real problem. Recently, and we're trying to confirm this now, LTD has received some information that, in fact, there's a median strip in the center of that, of West Eleventh right there, that currently has an approximate 12-foot-wide median strip in there, physical strip that's actually, you know, curb height. There's been some discussion with, with city staff about the idea of reducing the width of that median. So in fact, there may not have to be any impact on this property whatsoever if the lanes can actually be moved a little bit north so that they move always, or completely within the current right-of-way. Again, these two properties, when you come to what I refer to as damages in my lingo, but the biggest impacts occur on these two and are significant, we believe, as far as evaluation. Other than that, we really don't have any other properties that have significant impacts. Most of the rest can be mitigated. Okay, first, one of the things that we dealt with was parking because the FTA, the Federal Transportation Administration, feels that parking impact is something that they want to have mitigated as much as possible. So part of what we did, as I mentioned earlier, we worked with Jim Hanks on trying to see what it would take to, to diminish any impacts that we could within the areas. And we started off with the original design on the, on 28 properties. We had somewhere between 54 and 66 spaces that we were going to impact. The reason for the number range is that we found that there are many properties out there that actually don't have striped parking. So there's no way to actually understand how many you may impact, so we had to make that estimate. After the work that we did, after talking with Jim and taking a look at some of the ways that we could mitigate it through, as it says below, the reconfiguration, restriping of existing lots to create no net loss, reduce sidewalks, which I'll talk about in a minute, we were able to reduce the number of lost parking places down to 20 out of the original range, of which the 20, 13 of them are currently located on those two properties that I talked about previously, which is the adult store and the King's Market. So again, we're only impacting about seven parking spaces throughout the other 118, 116 properties that are actually affected by this project. So been able to reduce that a lot. In addition, we've talked to staff, city staff with regard to parking, or excuse me, to sidewalk widths, to green space widths. The original plan set up for approximately 11-foot area between the curb, street curb, and the outside of the right-of-way, which would be that area where we would have green space and walks, sidewalks. We've worked with staff because we'll show you in a few minutes, that's problematic when you look at the way buildings are located. And staff has indicated that there's, that they're very adaptable to reducing sidewalk widths and these right-of-way widths were necessary so that we don't have to affect properties through all the acquisitions. This is a couple of examples of parking. The Red Apple Market is one where we've got about five or six parking spaces right along the front of the road there, which would be affected. Interestingly, this is one area where some of those parking spaces, we believe, are actually in the public right-of-way currently. Again, having Jim go out and look at this with us, he believes we could actually get our net loss of parking down to maybe one space on this property. So we, we reduced from six to one. The lower right-hand corner is the Tire Factory out on West Seventh. The original plan, as you can see, the sidewalk, which is the hashed area, comes into the side of the building, drops down, gets thinner in front of the building, then widens back out. This is an example of where we're suggesting the sidewalk reduction so that the walkway and the take area is approximately seven feet wide. And as you looked, if you would look at the other photos on down the, the street a little bit, you'll see that they actually, a seven-foot right-of-way, or excuse me, sidewalk in that area works very well. It reduces the green space along there, but the plan will be to try to plant trees back into these areas where trees can actually fit back in. There's been discussions about possibly trying to put trees onto private property if owners want to do that. The other thing that, this is one of the other mitigations we did there. If you look on the bottom right, you'll see the white line that's down there. That actually is the current edge of their parking, and that's an example. If you remember what that is, there's about a 18 to 24-inch slope from the sidewalk up to that parking. The current plan would be to take that one parking space. Our recommendation on this to mitigate that would be to actually go in where the white line is. That would be a retaining wall put in, which would be a decorative wall of some type that would be about 18 inches to two feet high. The top of that would have some type of decorative safety rail on it. And that would make, that way that property owner could maintain that parking space. So again, that's an example of a mitigation plan that we came up with to reduce the loss of parking in that area. Building impacts, this is an example of some of the building impacts that are fairly minor. This particular one is the Mini Pet Mart down on West Sixth. An example in this one is the right-of-way will move back almost adjacent to the building, and this is where I was talking about. If you look at that, it appears that the, the right-of-way actually hits the building. But again, these lines are fairly wide. All of this, none of the, the acquisition will actually affect buildings like this. The acquisition will actually be outside of the building footprint. In this situation, you can see the sign on the upper left is actually on a small stub wall that sticks out approximately seven feet. It's not, it's about a foot wide. It's simply with something built back where that, that property was constructed. It's not structural. It has no, no purpose other than at some point, it was probably considered to be decorative. Actually, when we looked at this one, we noticed that it was separated from the building. So at some point, it probably was coming down anyways. And I understand from one of the representatives of LTD, they've talked to this property owner, and he's fine that that, that wall is removed. It's part of the project. That reconstruction of that area would be completely covered by LTD, and the project would take care of all impacts to that building at this point. Now to one of my favorite things, land use and code compliance. One of my concerns when we first started, and I talked to LTD about, is this idea of legal non-conforming uses. And that's where a property, all of a sudden, because of something that occurs to it, becomes what we refer to as a legal non-conforming use. I always have a very, I have a problem with this, and I actually deal with it on the other work I do now too, through TRG and so on, because it's, it, it creates a challenge to finance property. There has been some court cases where the lack of financeability is, could be considered to be a take. It depends on which district you work out of. So one of our goals here was to make sure that we did not make any property a non-conforming use property, and that has to do with the development standards of the city. We've had long chats with city staff regarding this and showed them all of our different properties in which we had concerns. And in every one, we were assured that that would be called a non-conforming situation, which is, does not affect the financeability of a property. It has to do with the fact that something changed after the property was constructed, and it's now a legal use, but it's not to our current development standards. But that property can continue on. If it's damaged, it can be rebuilt the way it was. The only thing it can't do is you cannot increase the intensity of that use. The example would be, I believe, medical office building in our community requires more parking. You couldn't go from a standard office to a medical office because more parking would be required if it didn't meet that standard before. But our example is you could go from a retail to an office use or reverse of that because both require the same type of parking and so on. So again, not a, not a code compliance problem, and therefore not really a problem from financeability for projects. Again, this is the type of thing I talked earlier about. This is an example of the Side Pocket Tavern down on West Sixth, where it appears that the building, or the, the right-of-way or the acquisition area would bounce into the side of the building, which doesn't make sense that you would actually create a sidewalk that would dead-end into a side of a building, start the other side, and you walk on. So these are the areas that we've talked to the staff, to city staff about and say that, you know, in areas like this, you don't want that situation to occur. So the idea will be that we'll actually reduce that. So ultimately, it could be that the actual acquisitions, when the final design occurs, may be substantially less as these kind of changes take place all the way along with the route. Another example of a retaining wall, this is again in front of the Lowe's. The original plan was to, as you can see down there, to take quite a bit of right-of-way. That right-of-way would have pushed back into the slope. There's no way that that slope along that wall would have been maintained without some type of, of resloping from the toe back. Had that been done, there would have been significant property loss and parking space along that front area where the acquisition would have occurred. Our plan would be is to, instead of actually doing that sloping, would be to have a designed retaining wall in that area that would hold that up. And again, no mitigation, or no loss of parking, thus we've mitigated any loss to that one, which would have been sizable. What will occur here, and depending on what ultimately the design is, these roadways, or the access points going up the one by the Pizza Hut and the one in the center, will actually have to all be resloped. Again, if you take a four-foot chunk out of a, out of a hill, you all of a sudden have a fairly abrupt edge, and the roads won't work, and we can't just bump up over them. So that roadway, those access points will have to be developed so that they have the correct slope. Again, that'll be part of the project. It'll be handled by the, during the construction of the, the right-of-way work out there. Again, not the responsibility of the property owner. We'll talk about this a little later. These are what we refer to as temporary construction easements. It's what is obtained from a property owner. It's an easement that allows construction teams to move into those areas, work on somebody's private property, their paid rent during the two to three years that the project goes on, based on a return on land value, its additional income. And actually, there'll be a lot of temporary construction easements all along the project because of the amount of work that'll need to be done. Getting close to the end of my part, there was 477 properties that, but the proposed project route, of which, of the 477, we analyzed 118 of those properties, or as you can see, just less than 25%. Again, we did those from the right-of-ways. We have not entered the property. So of the 100, and this actually came out sort of dark for this screen, but of the 118 properties, we analyzed, if you took the entire land area of those 118 properties, the actual acquisition of all lands will be less than 2% of that total amount. So quite a small amount of land total. Of the total acreage abuttedness, approximately 1% of the total acreage proposed is about 2.5. The reason for the slight differences in these numbers is we talk about larger parcels than some of the work that LTD did. So we've got a slight discrepancy, but again, it's a small discrepancy. Will be resolved by the time we finish the project. Again, this, this slide is to give you an idea of sort of the impacts that we have found out there and how much land is to be taken from each one if the project moves forward. There are 52 properties, of which less than 2% will be, as you can see, 35 properties out there. We found 2% to 5%, 19 properties between 5% and 10%. The only, right now, the only three known total acquisitions are three properties that are owned by Oregon Department of Transportation. And it's our understanding that actually those three properties will be donated by ODOT for this project, and there won't be any compensation involved. One of the properties that is of question, some of you may know, is Tommy's Tea House. It's located on West Seventh.
It orig-
LTD.
Sorry.
Thank you. It's, it's an unfortunate property as to what's occurred to that property over the years. There is a likely property acquisition there that may actually take out a small portion of the front of the, what I refer to as the old motel, which is now actually a resident area. According to permits, show that it received a change of use from that motel use in the mid-'90s to residential use. Part of the process for that property will be that if it actually loses portion of the front of it, and I'm talking not the, what was going to be the restaurant, but what actually was part of that old motel. The project will, or the, the acquisition will not only require that that property be returned to good, safe condition wherever the, the act, or wherever the take is of the building, but if the, if that happened to be a residential unit that could not be reused, and there's a loss there, the property owner will be compensated for the loss of that living unit. And of course, if there's someone in there at the time, there will, they have the rights to relocation benefits, which of course would happen during the process of, of acquisition of these properties.
I want to make light of that, but I did want to say it has no trespassing signs posted all, all over it. So it's-
And I'll let you know that I did not trespass when I looked at that property.
I meant, it's not in very good living condition.
So again, the largest take at this point in time proposed would be the nine properties, nine properties total that are over 10%. The maximum is 21%. And there is some other mitigation that we're working on to try to reduce that. But I, the 21% is-
21% is that triangle lot with the food cart on it.
Oh, correct. Where the, there's a little food cart. It's a Thai food cart down there on the corner of Blair, Seventh and, yeah, that area there. That's where the, that's where 21% is. That's the largest property acquisition as a percent of a property.
Does somebody actually own that property?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a cart on it.
I know there's a cart on it, but, but there's property on Chambers that is owned, that's in the right-of-way that is, people have their businesses on.
Actually, there's quite a bit of right-of-way where businesses are out there. Well, an example is, is you come back on Seventh Street from Garfield, on the north side, there's a, a transmission store. The actual right-of-way line is just a matter of a couple of three feet from the front of the building. Everything south of that is actually public right-of-way. Where the Kiefer's Auto Dealer is, their front line on both sides of the street is actually within the right-of-way. And that's not uncommon. We came across a number of properties that, what appears to be private property is actually right-of-way. So there'll be some discussion because, you know, you have to, if you lose parking, you have to compensate. But if your parking is basically in the right-of-way, have you lost parking? I don't have to answer that question. I get to have an attorney do that part for me.
How does this relate to the 2.5 acres? Does it? Is it a different?
No, this is actually all the totals of the 2.5 acres.
So all of this represents 2.5 acres?
Correct. Correct. And again, that's out of 118 properties or approximately, I'm not even going to try to remember how many the total acreages are, because as we continued to analyze this, we discovered that the original work that we got from LTD may have shown the properties that abutted the, the roadway, we actually would have found that there would be common ownership behind that. And again, as we analyze this later on, from an appraisal standpoint, and a, and a taking standpoint, we look to the larger parcel because there's a test of, of that larger parcel that we have to deal with. And it's the idea that not only might you affect the properties that aligned the right-of-way, but if you affect the ones behind it, which is referred to in my lingo as damages, we're referred to here as impacts, there may be some additional compensated requirement. But at this point, we've gone through most of those. We don't believe there's any of that type of, of impacts to the bigger, the larger parcels, that most all these really only impact the area of acquisition. And then small ones, like I told you, where there may be some parking, we may put in retaining walls. We have a series of signs. Do we have that in this one?
Do you have the signs now?
No. There are several places where you currently have private signs that after acquisition, part of the sign will be within the right-of-way. Our current code does not allow that to occur, so those signs will have to be relocated back. Most of the signs out there, other than on one possible property, all conform to code because we've already checked that with city staff. They fit the size and so on. So it'll be a matter of basically relocating those back, which will be part of the project. That'll require some re-engineering of the foundations, those big pieces of concrete that are underground, how you get your electrical there and so on. The plan now is that would all be part of the project, so the property owners are not required to deal with that themselves. The way the project is coming forth, to give you an idea, I've worked on projects where the condemning agency may come in and just hand the property owner a check and say, "Take care of everything yourself," all the way to the other end where the condemning agency may come in and take care of pretty much everything, which is currently the plan for LTD. Within reason, there may still be a few areas out there that we don't know of because we haven't made the property visits yet. This gives you, just again, a summary of what we found, as you can see back to what you asked me, John, is, you know, we have, of the 2.5 acres, you can see, we have a lot of properties that have under 100 square foot of, of area to be acquired out of the entire property. We have 55 properties where that acquisition area is between 100 and 1,000, and then we only have six properties total, is an example, where there's more than 3,000 square feet of acquisition area, and those tend to be on ones that are very lengthy properties, where there's quite a bit of frontage. Again, there's not a lot of depth being acquired anywhere in particular. Most of them that are longer have to do with, you know, properties that are quite a, quite a length, quite a long property, where there's two or three feet of the take.
I'm just, just trying to make sure I do understand. So, even on those long properties, or any of these, not all of these impact the parking. You just, you said that there's...
Correct.
15 parking spaces in that four-mile corridor.
Yes. You mean that are...
Impacting.
Yeah, 13 spaces would be impacted. There's actually, there's actually 20.
20. 13 are on two sides.
Right. So, there's only seven of them that are actually on the remaining 116 properties.
Got it. Along the entire corridor.
And the actual number of properties of, of that remaining 116 is what? Five, or...
For what?
There's only about three properties.
Three, three, so, yeah.
Right. Yeah, so it's, you know, the, the parking lot may be two parking spaces, something like that.
Ron, will you remind me how much of, how much of this is now dedicated lane for the MX, and, you know, not in traffic?
Okay, well, I believe it's about 60%, 65 percent, but that's, that includes what we call the bat lanes, the business and transit access lanes. That just means it's not a through lane, but cars can use those lanes to access businesses or to make right turns on cross streets.
And how does that compare to the two segments that we've already have done?
Very similar.
Very similar.
I see, you know, so far, all this information about the parking spaces is along 6th and 7th and 11th. How many are going to be lost, city metered spaces along Charnelton, and, I mean, there's other parking impacts, you know, besides the ones that are listed here. I, I know that, I guess that wasn't your, under your purview, but I, I mean, there will, will be other parking spaces lost. On the street, I'm talking about on the street, on the street parking.
When you said Charnelton, I was trying to think of where there was parking lots there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I...
I don't have that count.
No, okay.
I'll be happy to get that for you.
Also, I, you know, when, when my wife and I came to visit you and the LTD people the other day, kind of a preview and asked questions about this meeting, it seemed like their, their report that you had there was a little heftier. I'd like, I'd like to have a copy of that, if, I, you know...
I'll leave that up to them.
As long as it's not...
They actually don't have it yet.
Oh, I see.
They should get our, they should get our final draft.
It just looks like a finer grained, I mean, this is nice, and I do appreciate this a lot. This is a good, good presentation, but I, I mean, that one seemed a much finer-grained and, and kind of a detailed guy.
Well, no, that, that information will be made public. It's just, we're not at, this was, we have...
That was for you, from, I see, okay. Oh, I didn't understand that. I thought, somehow I thought that's the one that would be seen today. This is a summary of that whole...
Correct.
Report. Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes.
I saw Gray's was outlined in blue. What does that mean?
That's one of the areas where there would be a dedicated lane in front of the property.
Would that take part of Gray's property, or...
Yes, you remember, again, it's, it's a fairly narrow strip.
And it was just outlined, the, at the very beginning, all those maps, the properties that are outlined in blue were just for, for reference. That property, let's see, that has...
To let you know, this is closer to the size, George.
The acquisition on that frontage goes from six feet to 13 feet, and it ranges as it goes along that.
So, it would take away a lot of the parking?
Actually, that's one of the properties that, according to Jim Hanks, the traffic engineer, there right now is more width between the rear portions of the parking areas, and that can be reduced down and still be more than even our code requires. So, the travel area in the parking still is significant to allow easy traffic in and out, and that one has no loss of parking spaces.
Okay, I was just parked there. It didn't seem to, didn't seem like too much space to me. Then, another question, a place like Appleby's, where they conform to our requirement that they build close to the sidewalk, what happens to them?
At this point, the plan would be is that the acquisition area would be outside of the building footprint, including the extended awning area. So, it'll be outside of, of where their current building footprint is.
So, no impact on them?
No impact. No impact on the building. Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just back to the Gray's Garden Center. I'm fairly familiar with that, I used to be the general manager of Gray's Garden Centers. The, you said this, that it would allow for shrinkage of the, or shrink the space between the two, between the head and parking on the, on the store side, and the head and parking on the street side?
That's what Jim Hanks tells us, yes.
That gives us a little bit of a fundamental flaw in some of the analysis there, because Gray's, the garden center is actually, it is a garden center, it's a functioning garden center, and it's not compact cars that are backing in and out of there quite often. It's, it's vehicles that are hauling landscape materials and large, large loads, so I, I would question, I would not, certainly would not question Mr. Hanks' ability, you know, he's been a lot longer than I have, but I'd question whether or not that really is an adequate analysis for that particular type of, of operation, where it's not, it's more like a, it's a home center-type parking lot, as opposed to a grocery store parking lot.
Commercial vehicles.
Industry.
According, according to Jim Hanks, there will be, there would be no change in the type of parking. Compact parking is smaller. It would end up with the same regular-sized parking, as well as the same number of compact, so there would be no reduction. And actually, according to, to Jim Hanks, the, the movement area between the two would still exceed our code requirements.
Well, thank you, and I certainly trust Mr. Hanks, he has a lot of that piece in the area.
And again, all of that is sort of in those phases down the road, once we get to a, a more detailed design of these projects.
That was just a little bit of a flagrant, right? I'm not going to slow things down at this point.
Gray's actually tends to be the one that we talked about quite a bit to get started with this whole project, many, many months ago.
Other questions? Thanks. Okay, I guess that's...
Whoops, a couple more real quick. This, again, just kind of shows you, we're not done. I appreciate that, Mayor, that you're trying to get me out of here. Again, this, this gives you just a quick summary of, of sort of the impacts as we saw them, and how we tried to mitigate as we went through. And I think, overall, talking to staff, city staff and LTD staff, the plan and the mitigation will really reduce this, the impact on this project, as maybe it's compared to what was believed to occur many, many months ago on this project. So, it's been amazing how well those mitigation plans are likely going to reduce any of these impacts here. One of the things I always get asked, and I'm surprised I haven't heard it yet, but I'll pass it out anyways, one of the things that, as we went through, we tried to estimate, sort of for budgeting purposes, whereabouts we thought the cost from where I would be as an appraiser would be to this project. Not included in that, make sure I get them all, it's great to have the brains here sitting next to me on these things. It doesn't include the billboard removal costs, because we don't know what those are. Billboards are sort of a unique creature in our community, and if you remember our code, you have what they call running square feet, which means in any particular distance, you can only have so many square feet of billboard signs, and it has to do, it's a moving number, so it's not like you can pick your mile or your half mile and say, "I get this." This thing continues to move on. It's the billboard's cost we don't have. We, of course, don't know that what the retaining walls are going to be yet, because retaining walls haven't been designed, so we're not sure what those are. We don't know what the sign movement is, so we don't know what to budget for that yet. But again, these are project costs that'll be there, and I'm getting...
Trees?
Trees, street trees. Again, the project will take care of the street trees, and the intent is, is to create as much green space as possible as you go through. Excluding those four items, we've estimated, and we tried to set a baseline number of what we thought maybe where the true budget would be, but then we wanted to make sure we fudge to the high side, because we could go through appreciation. We don't have the design, so we could go up. So, at this point, the estimated impact from a cost standpoint, from what most would think is, is a taking, is less than $4 million throughout the whole 118 properties. So, I was actually surprised myself, being involved in several of these projects, that those numbers, as we moved through this, were as, as low as they were.
And, you know, as, as Rick said, we are only about 8 percent design. As we go into, as, as we move in, as we move forward with this, in going into further design, we will obviously mitigate, need to mitigate the remaining parking spaces. Once the environmental analysis is, is, is approved, and we work with the property owners, you know, there will be changes to this project, but the changes can only go in a positive direction, not a negative direction. In other words, we can't make changes that'll suddenly take more parking, or, or have other negative, another negative impacts. This kind of sets, sets the minimum bar from which where we will work to, to mitigate against any of the neg, any of the negative aspects that, that has been identified.
Well, thank you for the presentation. While I got you here, I want to ask you, would you tell us, I know we're in the process of talking, at least doing some initial studies on the, the next possible segment?
Well, the, the, we will begin a planning process on the next segment, which will be from LCC via McVeigh Highway to downtown Springfield, and then from Springfield out Main Street to Thurston. We haven't, we don't have a calendar set for when that will start, but it'll begin probably sometime later this, later in spring, and we will, you know, be partnering with the city of Springfield, the city of Eugene, for the LCC, LCC, and other, you know, all the other stakeholders, in, in, as far as beginning that planning process.
Okay, thanks. I thought it was just sort of appropriate for us to kind of get that forward look, so thank you very much for that. Anything else anybody has with that? We'll just say thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, look at that. It's only 6:35, and why don't we, how about, um... How about dealing with the consent calendar? Do that? Want to put that out there, George?
Yeah, I just have to find it as well.
Is that in the consent calendar?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Just I moved to approve the items on the consent calendar.
I moved to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Moved and seconded? Betty?
I'm going to pull the IGR.
You want to pull the IGR?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll vote on A, B, and D. No, yeah, A, B, and D. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Betty, you want to talk about the IGR?
When I find it, yes.
Do you want to wait for...
It's right there, some page.
Mayor, can you, can we congratulate, um...
Page 53.
Just a minute, just...
63? 53, okay.
House Bill 4017.
Yes.
4017.
4017, okay.
And I, the staff recommended that we support this bill. I made, there were only two of us present at the IGR committee meeting, only two committee members present, so I made a motion that we change that to oppose, I think, didn't I? Was it oppose or monitor?
Yes.
Oppose, I think. And there was no second. George did not second that. Therefore, it, I would like to bring it up here, I, I think we should not support that bill.
So, you're making a motion to not...
I moved that we change it to oppose.
I'll second it.
Did seconded. Did you want to say anything more about it, Betty?
Well, I think there is enough punishment, it's been a while since I looked at this, but the person who has been convicted of driving under the influence has been sufficiently punished already, and having to have this contraption in the car, I think, said for five years, didn't it? I think that is just too much punishment. It's an embarrassment when they have other people in the car with them, and, and I think that once this has happened to you, you're probably remorseful enough that you aren't going to do it again, anyway, and I don't, I see no point in, in further punishment. So, I think we should not have a law that people have to have this device in their cars.
Andrea?
Does this have any legs? Do we know at the legislature?
I don't. What I was going to suggest...
Wait until we got, get Brendan?
Yeah, if, and I don't know if there'll be somebody there tonight or not to talk about it, or we get back in touch, because I would want to make sure that...
Yeah, I'd like more information on this.
...chief has a chance to weigh in, because I suspect they have some real reasons why they would recommend it.
We have time, probably get ahold of her, just so she'll be available, and we can start out with that this evening, if you'd like.
Yeah, we'll try to do that if we can, so...
All right, so we'll bring it back up before we leave this evening. Yes, George?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I really, this is the first I've ever heard of these devices before, and I, I don't have any idea how they work, or...
I'm familiar with them.
Okay, well, I, yeah, I, I wouldn't mind if we put this on this a while, just so we could have a little more.
I think the issue for, if Brendan's available, that would be good, because the issue for her is, we can learn about it and debate it, but if it's, it's, it won't help her have to deal with it, so...
Yeah, no, I don't mean a big debate, I just mean a little more information.
Just keep me on the queue for later.
Okay, I've got you and George Polling in the queue for later. And you, okay. All right, so with that, we'll start, we'll have, put that back on our agenda tonight.
Yeah, we do have a motion on the table. That's...
Table? Till later?
Want to table till the meeting?
Table till the meeting?
Till a time term?
Okay, you want to make a, I guess we have to do, we have to do that officially, so you want to put a...
I make a motion, we table until the 7:30 work session, or meetings.
Second.
Moved and seconded? All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor, none in opposition? Okay.